Your chimes.
It's getting slower, though, because it's running out of spring in there for the bell, so. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna start the record button.
Okay. Folks, if you are ready, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Education on December 21st, 2020, to order, and if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We're going to pause for a moment of silence this evening. A moment of silence is for Peter L. Page, a substitute employee of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Mary Dewey, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna start right off with our first BPT, and it's the North Syracuse Early Education Program. And I think we have some people here from there. Yes, we do. So, when you are ready, I'm gonna say go ahead. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. This is definitely a different way to do our BPT presentation. We too miss the music, because we do often end up in the December meeting. I'm Dawn Hussein. I think everyone here knows me and I know them, but I am the principal at the Early Education Program. I am proud to say that I have with me two members of our BPT tonight that will be doing the majority of our presentation. I think one thing, one awesome thing that has come out of this pandemic is that our BPT has proven to be a very effective group that has led us through many hard decisions during this pandemic. So, Kelly Santa is a school psychologist in our building, and she is one of our BPT co-chairs, and Jen Thayer is representing our speech therapy team. So I am going to share my screen with you, and they will be doing much of the presenting. Can everyone see the screen? Okay. Great, so I will turn it over to Kelly and Jen.
Thank you, Dawn. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. And this is a little bit different doing this virtually like this, but we're very happy to be here. I'm gonna begin by talking about the North Syracuse Early Education Program's demographics and continue with the assessment procedures. Then Kelly will continue discussing our attendance, our social-emotional learning, some of our celebrations, our challenges, and our action plan. On the next slide, we wanted to share this with you this evening. This is our brand that we worked really hard and diligently on trying to encompass what we feel the North Syracuse Early Education Program community is. We are nurturing strong foundations and encouraging every child's potential. One reason why we also wanted to share this slide is because we adapted our beloved Main Street North Syracuse Early Education bear with a mask. We are a program where students come in person up until last week, five days a week. It has been absolutely phenomenal. I could become emotional thinking about it, but these students have really shown us what strength is and determination. The vast majority come to school just like our bear in their mask, ready to take steps, climb those blocks, and continue to achieve. We're really proud of them. At the North Syracuse Early Education Program, currently, we have 194 total enrollment of students. They attend five days a week. This includes 13 remote students. Currently, of those students, 138 are disabled or students receiving special education services, while 56 compromise our non-disabled preschoolers. The number with our non-disabled preschoolers has decreased quite a bit because of different restrictions and regulations with regard to how many students we can have in the classroom to ensure proper social distancing and safety. The majority of the classrooms have approximately four students of our non-disabled pairs, where in the pairs where in the past we would have eight. We have 11 and a half special class integrated setting classrooms, five full-day and 13 half-day sections. We used to have 14 half-day sections prior to COVID, but again, due to decreased enrollment, currently at 13 half-day. Of our total enrollment, we have eight different school districts represented. However, 72% of the students are North Syracuse Central School District residents. We always like to remind the board and the public that our funding is via private tuition and state and county funding. It is not through district funding. Our last bullet is that of our total enrollment, 25.4% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. We utilize this percentage in an equation to determine eligibility for Title I funding. Based on our percentage of free and reduced lunch population, we do qualify for Title I funding. You need 40%. We have 40.1%. Kelly will talk a little bit more about different things we utilize with that funding. Our staff at the North Syracuse Early Education Program comprises of 11 full-time and one part-time teacher. Again, that's reflective of the reduced half-day class. We have 25 full-time teaching assistants, 12 part-time, six speech-language pathologists, three occupational therapists, two full-time and one part-time physical therapist, a teacher of the visually impaired, two psychologists. We have a social worker, which is new this year, which we're really thrilled about. And again, that is reflective of some of our Title I funding. We have one RN and one LPN, I believe are still the only preschool in the county that has an RN onsite. And you know, this picture of these particular staff members were placed here on purpose without everything Gail and Linda did. I'm not sure if our many components of being up and running in September could have happened so seamlessly. We have five full-time office staff, one part-time, and we have four custodians. We've increased our custodian by one, again, to different guidelines based on sanitation, cleaning, and everything affected with the COVID pandemic. The next slide talks about our assessment. At the North Syracuse Early Education Program, we use the speed dial. We use this building wide, and this is utilized with students who receive services and students who do not receive services, or our special education population and our non-disabled peers. Generally, when we're in school, we administer this test in the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year. That way, we can compare data and see where gains have been made, and if there's any discrepancies, formulate ideas on how we can address that. We also collect information on our students, both our students receiving services and our non-disabled peers through observation and data collection. We have trimester IEP updates. We also have bi-annual pre-K report cards that have been recently realigned to reflect pre-K standards. The next slide is looking at some of the pre-K, or I'm sorry, some of the speed dial data we were able to analyze. In presentations in the past, we would take information from one enrollment class from the beginning of the year and compare it to the end of the year. Due to COVID, we don't have information from the end of the year. This isn't a test that you can give effectively over teletherapy means. So what we decided to do was kind of hypothesize what do our students look like who came in this September 2020 compared to our students from 2019. And before we had the data, we were talking and noticing that our students, both receiving services and those not receiving services, seem to have more needs, whether it be on a social-emotional level, whether it be on an academic level, a combination. And these scores, in fact, reflect that. Although it's small, it does demonstrate the students that started this September 2020, when compared to the students starting September 2019, have more delays or more needs with both our disabled and non-disabled population.
And I just want to highlight, too, on this screen, where you see the decline is specifically under the standard score, too, and that's where age equivalency is taken into consideration. So not necessarily reflected in the total score, but the standard score where age is a factor.
Great, thank you, Dawn. And so the next graph that we're looking at was trying to compile data or to gain data from the students that returned. So our students that started in September 19 and the same students that returned this September. The previous graph demonstrated students that were returning as well as our new students. This is just with regard to our returning students. These students were also students that were receiving services on some level from the North Syracuse Early Education Program through remote learning, whether it was teletherapy, packets, conversations with parents, a combination, CSO. This includes this population. And what we're looking at is the point increase. And what we found that there was a point increase in both total score and standard score, demonstrating that these returning students, so our NSCEP students from last year who returned this year, at least maintained or demonstrated some progress during the closure. Now it's Kelly's turn.
Thank you, Jen. You can see from this slide that we at North Syracuse Early Education, we have a consistently high attendance rate, mid-to-high 90s range. Even our remote students who are learning from home, they check in via Zoom meetings or they check in via asynchronous lessons through the CSO platform. Their attendance has been fabulous, even though they are working from home. I think our attendance has a lot to do with the fact that we have the youngest learners in our district, and these young learners are really just joyful about being in school. They really enjoy the school experience. Their parents are highly invested in their in their special needs children's education, having them get their special instruction, have them get their therapy, and the tuition-paying parents are also highly invested in making sure that their investment is paying off for them. Our program really, I can't think of any environment that is really more steeped in social-emotional learning than a preschool program. All of our staff have been doing social-emotional learning before it became a thing. All of our staff are trained in early childhood preschool behavior interventions and supports, and any new staff members that we have come in who haven't already gone through the training, we have methods to get them that training on staff development days and on their own time. Many of our staff members are using a curriculum from Michelle Garcia Winner, the Incredible Flexible You curriculum that talks about social thinking, social competence. It teaches children about their behavior and their feelings, and it gives them insight that their behavior and their feelings affect other people as well as just themselves. We have staff members who have done self-guided study and workshops revolving around trauma-informed practice and working with children. Our classrooms use the Zones of Regulation to help children learn about behavioral regulation. Many of our staff members are trained in a DIR or floor time method of play, which is a developmental play therapy method that really gets at the developmental level of some of our most delayed learners. And finally, our BPT spent time in the 2019-2020 school year really exploring, bringing in a social-emotional learning curriculum, something that's standardized across the building. We explored the Positivity Project. We explored a program called Second Step. And ultimately, we decided on the Second Step program. And our next slide will show us that we've implanted the Second Step program with the help of a foundation that serves Western and Central New York that's dedicated to social-emotional development of young children. The Petals Program, or Positive Emotional Development and Learning Skills, provides a grant. We applied for it. We were awarded this grant. And we are piloting this Second Step program with Petals in five, all five of our full-day classrooms this year. The Petals Grant provides all of the materials of the Second Step social-emotional curriculum. So the classrooms all have kits. The Second Step curriculum is an evidence-based curriculum. It's developmentally appropriate for our very young learners, and it helps our preschool-age students develop social and emotional concepts and skills. It promotes school readiness. It helps them solve problems, pay attention, and learn to self-regulate their emotions and their own behavior. The Petals Program comes with in-class coaching from the Petals expert coaches, and this coaching is up to four hours a month per classroom, per the five classrooms. The coaches come in, they observe the implementation of the Second Step program, and they offer real-time problem-solving to our teachers. The Petals Program also provides screening tools to identify students who might be more in need than just the classroom curriculum, who may need referrals for the school psychologist, social workers, outside supports. The screening tools that we're investigating through Petals Program are the Deveraux Early Childhood Assessment in the Ages and Stages Questionnaire. And that's about the point we are in our school year, where we're looking at starting to to really do some more intensive screening with our students. Sustainability is a real component of the Petals Program. The program participants, our classrooms, complete self-assessments periodically, which help generate ideas for goals and for the next steps in the program. And our program has identified one next step, which will be bringing this program to our half-day classes next year, as well as continuing to offer it in our full-day classes. This is a data-driven program. Teachers use online platforms to report progress regarding their curriculum implementation, any behavioral challenges they have in the classroom. And the Petals coaches also use tracking forms in their monthly observations. They track the teachers' use of using the strategies while they're teaching. Here are some adorable pictures of our preschool students. Most of our social-emotional learning really comes through playtime. Play is the work of kids. It's how they learn. It's how they learn to negotiate conflicts with one another, how they learn to share and take turns. They develop their play skills, their creativity, their imagination. They develop social language to help them negotiate those conflicts and express their feelings and their emotions. They, through play, develop secure relationships, loving relationships with the adults in the room, with their peers. Each of our classrooms at the North Syracuse Early Education Program commit to 60 minutes a day of play-to-learn time in their classrooms. Despite 2020 being really difficult in so many ways, we really have a lot to celebrate at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. I think Jen really emphasized this beautifully at the beginning of the presentation. Since the very first day of school, we have been five days a week in person, and the students are thriving. The kids and the staff are so happy to be at school, to be in person, to enjoy those relationships with one another. We've been really successful with COVID procedure implementation. The compliance with masks, the youngest learners and some of the very most disabled learners in our district are compliant with masks. They are wearing their masks for the most part all day, every day. And I sing their praises to anybody who will listen, that if these little ones can adapt, all of us crazy adults can adapt and go along with that, too. And I think because of that, because of our compliance with the procedures, we've had a very low number of cases among staff and students. We've been really very healthy at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. Our staff and our families have been so adaptable. Our start and end times of our school day have changed to accommodate for fewer parents being in the building. Our students are not independent. They can't come in the building on their own. They can't have a parent drive up and drop them off. Their parents have to come in with them and to reduce the times we're starting our full day at a different time than our half-day, we're ending at different times. So parents have drop-up and pickup times that are vastly different. The procedures are vastly different. They're handing off their children and not seeing the classroom, all of the classroom staff and the things going on in the classroom. Our staff and our parents have risen to the occasion with virtual meetings. We're not having our daily staff meetings, our faculty meetings, our BPT meetings, any of our meetings in person. We're doing them all virtually. And we've been doing our parent conferences virtually, meeting with parents regarding concerns and evaluations virtually. So everybody has really risen to the occasion with being adaptable and following the rules. All of our classrooms receive new ViewSonic boards at the end of the summer and are using those in their teaching. We have added a school social worker with our Title I funding, and she has proven herself in a very short time. She's been there to be a valuable staff member and very helpful. Our building has so many supports out in the community who help us financially and with other things that we need. And one of our biggest celebrations is we have an amazing new playground. Our playground is so awesome. We have this brand-new, totally inclusive playground. If you know about the playground at the Anadaga Lake Park, the playground for all there, I think this is a rival to that. It's beautiful. It's wheelchair-accessible. Children of all levels of ability can be independent in their play now. They can access all areas of the play. No one gets left out or left behind because of any disabling condition. They can access all of the equipment. I have to give an enormous shout-out to Sherry Rotelli. She is a physical therapist in our building, and she really spearheaded this project. She had an amazing vision for this, and she worked diligently. She not only has the expertise to know what would be appropriate for the students with disabilities in our building, the typical students, but she was so determined, and she worked nonstop to secure funding and grants for this. We received a number of grants from different community foundations. The CNY Community Foundation, the Jim and Julie Beheim Foundation, Summerwood Pediatrics. The North Syracuse Central School District offered us both some money and their wonderful labor of their maintenance crew to help us make this happen. Lockheed Martin, Alsterby, as well as a number of community members, all contributed to this beautiful vision that Sherry had for this wonderful playground. It's been quite a celebration. With our celebrations, we also have some challenges, and I can't imagine that any BPT would come here and say their biggest challenge has not been COVID-19. I think that has thrown a wrench into all of what we do on a daily basis. Due to the social distancing guidelines, we've had to reduce our class size from 16 students to 12. So we're taking four less tuition-paying preschoolers in each of our classrooms. So that's been a hit to us financially. Also, we've had some delays in our ability to fill our special education openings. Like Jen mentioned earlier, we're down one entire afternoon component of one of our half-day classes. And we've had a few openings here and there as well, and we'll go into 2021 with still having that afternoon not full. We've had delays in the evaluation because we couldn't get together in person with families to do our preschool evaluations. And we've had some parents of children who do qualify for a program who've just not felt safe and who've chosen to have their kids have services at home rather than sending them to a preschool program. We're challenged always with the state. They're always renegotiating the reimbursement rates for the services we provide, so that reimbursement is always unknown to us, kind of from year to year, how that's gonna affect things. There's a real increase in student needs. We've had our youngest learners have six or more months of very minimal services at a really critical age and stage of their development. Teletherapy has not been as wonderful as it could be for some of our youngest learners. Kids who are two, three years old, we really question sometimes their ability to, you know, is this teletherapy developmentally appropriate for them? So they're coming in without having that in-person service that they've had in the past through early intervention. And our staff wellness is always a concern. To work on all of these concerns, we will continue to follow the New York State Department of Health and CDC guidelines. They don't always match up, but our office staff and our health staff and custodians have been great at always reading through all the documentation and making sure we're doing all of the things that we need to be doing. Our Sunshine Committee plans staff wellness activities and celebrations within our building to increase morale. Our new social worker, we're trying to come up with responsibilities and roles for her that optimize her time in our building with both students and with staff as well. We're gonna continue implementing Second Step in our full-day classrooms and apply for grant funding next year for our half-day rooms. And then just continuing to seek out professional development opportunities that are specific to mindfulness, wellness of our staff. I would like to thank all of our BPT members. I think one of the things I'm proud of as the co-chair of our BPT is that we have consistent representation from all of our professional groups within the building. We've never had a problem finding a parent representative who wants to donate their time for this or teachers and assistants who will stay above and beyond their workday or meet. You know, we met endlessly over the summer and as we were approaching September to come up with plans. And everybody is very diligent in their work with the BPT and very invested in that. I would like to end my presentation, our presentation, by thanking Dawn Hussein and Jen Thayer who presented tonight and asking the board if you have any questions.
All right, Bob Crabtree, I've got a couple of questions and a comment. Dawn, you talked about state, county funding, and private tuition, but you talked about Title I. Do you get any funding? Title I, isn't that a federal? Is it a grant that you're getting, or?
Yeah, so the Title I specifically for our building is allocated for the social worker position.
And that comes from the federal government, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. The reason I say that is the president-elect, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, is definitely pro-education. And he's talked about really, really increasing the Title I funding and especially a special ad and so forth. So I'm hoping that, hopefully, that will get to you. The other thing I wanted, just two comments about your PTO also. You have a very strong, if it hasn't changed, you have a very strong PTO. And I want the other school board members and the community to know that each year you give a scholarship to a former student that started your school 14, 15 years ago that walks across the stage at CNS. To me, that is amazing. And it starts with you guys, with students that aren't even verbal when they come in. I know a former student of mine, when I read his reports and stuff, he wasn't even verbal when he came to your school. He didn't talk. He didn't talk. He wasn't verbal. And he got a scholarship. So, I mean, it's amazing. And Sherry, I can't say enough about Sherry. You're lucky to have her as a teaching assistant. And she also gets the staff to contribute contributions for scholarships. So I just think that's amazing. And then the last thing, just to comment to you, that I saw Santa Claus on Sunday, and he had an excellent time with your students. Said they were all good, and they were gonna get great presents.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Yeah, Santa zoomed with our students this year on our new ViewSonic board. So that was definitely a different way of doing things, but the classrooms had cookies and juice with Santa on Zoom.
Yeah.
If I could just add, Sherry Rotelli is a physical therapist at our building.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Her perspective as a physical therapist. I just wanna... And then the other thing I wanted to just comment on to Mr. Crabtree is our PTO. And you know, we have had a strong PTO, you know, thank goodness, over the years. But one of the huge challenges that we have is that our PTO changes representatives, officers, every year to two years, because we only have our parents for a couple of years. If we get really lucky, we may have them for three years. But our PTO this year is all brand-new officers. No one carried over from last year, and they are doing an awesome job figuring things out. So yeah, I think it is our parents' commitment to doing whatever they can to support the school where their kids are, which I'm sure is happening across the district, you know, but it's great to see.
Thank you.
I do have a kind of a question, but you're gonna have to help me along, because it's not something I fully understand. But since Bob brought up budget issues, I had a text discussion after his legislative committee meeting last week with Phil Clary. He was explaining to me... committee meeting last week with Phil Clary. He was explaining to me a little bit about the integrated rate and that you get funding through, I guess, from the state. And I noticed when you were in the beginning of your presentation, at the end, you talked about the drop in numbers of the non-disabled tuition paying student. So it's got me a little concerned. Are we, do we see, do we have a concern about a funding issue with that ratio going down of non-disabled to disabled? And could you just speak to that a little bit? Or I know you mentioned at the beginning, some of they had to do with he had to have the smaller class sizes, but I just got a little concerned about that. And I'm trying to ask the question the best I can.
Right, it's a good question. So the majority of our funding does come through our special education population. So the dip in numbers in our general ed population is definitely not as large of a budget impact as the dip in a special education student. So on average, we receive three to $400,000 a year in preschool, general ed tuition. And that's in about a $6 million total budget. So in the big picture, our our general education funding is considerably less than our special education funding. So a bigger concern would be that the state has not announced what their reimbursement methodology is going to be for preschool for this year. So we're operating in a much different environment than any other year because they haven't even told us how we're going to be paid. So that by far is of of greater concern for the special ed portion of the funding. And and our numbers are down in general for our special education students too. So they're not as drastically down, but we we haven't been able to fill our our spaces. And usually by the first month into the school year, we have our spaces filled and we have a waitlist. And so we're, we are almost getting to the point now that hopefully in January we can start having conversation about reopening that half day classroom that we had to close. And hopefully getting to the point where we we will have a full, a full program and and potentially a waitlist after that. So.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, then I thank you very much for that.
Thank you for having us.
Sure. And we will move on to our next BPT. That would be Sisera Elementary School. And we have some of their members there. So when you are ready, I see Mrs. Wheeler and some others. So you may take it. Thank you.
Okay, I have to figure out where my presentation is. There we go. I want to first introduce the BPT members that I have with me here tonight. We have a pretty representative group of staff. Dawn Matthews is the co-chair of the BPT and she is a fourth grade classroom teacher working in an inclusion classroom. Melissa Dickens is teaching virtually this year. She has first grade virtual students, including our ENL, all of our ENL remote students are in her classroom. Katie Ash is our AIS teacher and she will be here tonight to talk about data. She's teaching both hybrid and remote students. And finally, Corey Patterson is our music teacher. And she also is teaching our hybrid and our remote students. So we've got a lot of experience here tonight to take us through our presentation. I'm going to start with just a couple of pictures of things that are a little bit different this year. We're dropping off and picking up students at a different entrance this year, getting them out of their cars and taking their temperatures before they go into class. And then the other picture is the teaching assistant taking the temperature of one of our students getting off the bus. So our arrival and dismissal looks quite different this year. A little bit about our school. These are the students we have. Our population this year is five fifty-seven. And that gives you the breakdown in each of our grade levels, both hybrid and remote. We have forty-seven English language learners. We have ninety-six students with disabilities and our free and reduced lunch rate is twenty-seven percent. Katie's going to talk to us about our data.
Okay, um, the foundational reading assessment is administered to all first grade students in the fall each school year. The FRA identifies a number of items as students received and which items were scored both accurate and fluently. Accurate indicates which items were answered correctly. Then the fluently indicates items that were answered accurately and with an efficient or speedy response time. With this in mind, in order to secure our best possible data for the 2020 school year, all students this year used an iPad for this assessment. In the past, we've used both touchscreen Chromebooks and traditional Chromebooks. And we feel that this offered us our students a higher playing field and they were able to show an increase in the proficiency. We also did it in a smaller group setting of two to three students at a time. So this slide is about the RI administration and frequently students will test out of the FRA by the end of first grade. But being unable to administer the assessment in June due to the COVID closure, this slide demonstrates the impact of the closure that had on students' reading growth. In 2019, we had eighty-eight percent of our students ready to take the RI and in 2020, only seventy percent of our students. And this fall, forty-four percent of our third grade students scored in the proficient or advanced range and forty-six point seven percent of our fourth grade students were in the proficient or advanced range on the reading inventory. On the math inventory, twenty-one percent of our third grade students and twenty-two percent of our fourth grade students scored in the proficient or advanced range.
Thank you, Katie. Dawn is going to talk to us about our building goals.
Okay, our building goals have been, are very similar to what we've had in the past. We've just updated them to meet the new needs this year. Our first goal is teachers working together, analyzing student data, common assessments and planning lessons to meet all learners' needs. The essential standards are currently being worked on by all grade levels and they're being utilized in each grade level. Our professional learning communities are still meeting on a very regular basis, discussing the essential standards and we are now in the process of working on the common assessments for that piece. And we are also utilizing our school support team to address any additional student needs. We are continuing with the standards-based grading. We are using the essential standards again to plan our lessons, create our assessments, score student work. But this year, we are also working on ways that we can best show evidence of learning with students in the remote platforms as well. For full-time remote students as well as our hybrid students who are also working remotely as well, given days. And our third goal is the honoring differences and supporting the learning of all of our students. So we support and celebrate all learners regardless of their ability. Based on IEP needs, we are also
That was my fault. I don't know how to go back.
That's okay. I have it in front of me, actually. So we are using the IEPs as well and instruction is incurring, occurring in the inclusive settings as much as possible. And we are also this year making sure that we are sensitive to and honoring all of the differences of at-home learning environments as well, both for our full-time remote students as well as our hybrid students on our remote days.
This slide just gives us, gives you a couple of the strategies that we're currently using throughout the grade levels. Some of the, some of them are newer. Actually, this year, a lot of them are newer, especially on Zoom and Seesaw, Google Meet and Google Classroom. Teachers are learning how to use that. They're learning in their PLCs as well as taking professional development in some of the technology platforms in order to be able to deliver their instruction to all of the students. Melissa's going to talk to us a little bit about our SEL initiatives.
Hi, everybody. So we, obviously SEL has really kind of taken the front seat in a lot of our instruction and a lot of our interaction with students this year. And we have, we were lucky to have some programs in place that we found really successful with students and supporting their needs. So a few of the things that we already had in place that we found to be very helpful for students. The sensory pathway continues to be an invaluable resource for students. It allows movement breaks for them, but it also, students, it can be utilized in a safe way that, you know, follows all of the health and safety guidelines for our COVID procedures. Our teachers and counselors have been implementing the zones of regulation. And that has been, you know, another piece that a lot of students have benefited from because it has helped so many of them with de-escalation and recognizing, you know, what they need to to self-regulate themselves. There's been a lot of students with anxiety, you know, whether it means coming to school, staying at school. And the counselors and teachers are are able to support students using some of the techniques that the zones of regulation provide. The Positivity Project is, you know, continues to provide teachers with instruction and resources to reinforce our character strengths, which is important with for students to, you know, continue their mental, you know, their mental health and their, you know, positive outlook on themselves in school. Calm Connect is something that's new for for a lot of people. It it's under a new name. I know some teachers, including myself, have used it under the name of Me Moves. And that's another piece that allows students to de-escalate, self-regulate. It's a kinesthetic and rhythmic program and then it helps students to settle their bodies, but it also allows them to move within their own space. You know, Go Noodle, a lot of these things, as as a remote teacher, all of these things with the exception of the path, sensory pathway, all of these things are things that all of our learners can benefit from. And the teachers use as resources to to help support their their learners. So we're lucky to have a lot of those in place already.
Thank you. So our English language learners are a growing population for us. We currently have students from twenty-two different countries. The last two years, we've had a really dynamic multicultural fair and we're just now starting to talk about how can we still do that, but do it virtually so that we can still get the students involved in sharing things about their own countries. Corey's going to talk to us a little bit about how special areas are different this year in a remote setting.
Hi, well, all of our students receive art, music, library and physical education one time each week. The remote students get all four areas at home and then our hybrid students receive two special areas in school each week and then two special areas at home. Gym takes place in the gym and the art, music and library take place in the classroom. So we've had to adapt quite a bit in each of our areas for the year. And in the next slide, you'll see an example of music in the classroom. And, or actually, this one is music remotely. We have two music examples and this is kids doing a music lesson at their house. And there's classical music playing with them. I don't know if you could hear it. I think we skipped one slide. That's okay.
I'll find it.
There it is. This one is a music lesson in the classroom and this particular class, they've had five remote lessons from me, so five lessons at home. And this is the third time I saw them in person. And we can't sing this year at school, so we're doing a lot of body percussion. And I'm not bringing in a lot of instruments this year. So we're using the desks instruments and working on our third grade rhythms. This is like like culminating activity after, oh, please, we've been working on for ten weeks and we've done it. This is our third time in person.
Not letting me.
Oh.
I'll try it again. Oh, here we go.
And the thing for me as a music teacher that I like about that is you can tell the kids are actively doing the do making music at their house because they wouldn't be able to put it together like that if they weren't getting up a movie and doing music at home too. So and this final one is a kindergarten remote lesson.
I'm not sure why we can't hear this, but he's, he's actually doing some word building, some guided word building. His teacher is providing instruction on the manipulation of the sounds and the letters and giving him guiding his thinking without giving, telling him exactly what to do.
Thank you for that, John, or Melissa, because I could hear the sound. I didn't realize that you guys were not hearing the sound.
No, I couldn't.
That was Michelle Kohler teaching a hybrid or a remote kindergarten class. So our next slide is just to let you know that our PTG has remained very active throughout this from last spring, making sure that we were able to have some of our regular celebrations at the end of the year in parade fashion and then starting this school year by trying to keep classrooms with fun activities to do, but still not having parents in the building and not having students, you know, in crowds to be able to do socially distanced craft activities and parties as well as providing some of those things for our remote learners. So they've been very, very active and they do, they're always asking, what can we do? And they've been very, just very supportive of all of our teachers. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognized them. Melissa's going to talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we're facing this year.
So we wanted to be transparent with our challenges. Obviously, this transition to teaching has not been easy. But we're all doing our best to kind of make it work. And what we did was we, we spoke at our PLCs about the biggest challenges that we face and there's, there's three, we have actually four remote teachers in our building. So some of us, we were able to have pretty good cross-pollinated conversations about things. And we noticed that there were actually a lot of common themes that surfaced that we know that we're all experiencing, whether we're, you know, just strictly remote or hybrid teachers. So that was really surprising, that commonality. But I think the biggest challenge that everyone is facing is the equity of it. And, you know, trying to create things and sustain things for all students and meet all of their needs. Really, when you boil it down, that's all of these things, these details are just really just say that, you know, we're, we're struggling to to do that in both areas. But we're, you know, there's been a lot of cross-conversation and there's been a lot of support and collaboration in order to be as successful as we can to support students and support each other in the process.
And this is a list of our BPT members, just so you know who we are. And this is a list of our BPT members, just so you know who we are. And that ends our presentation. Before I, before I stop sharing my screen, does anybody want to see anything? What's up there? All right. Does anybody have a question for us?
I don't have any questions, but I, if any of the board members didn't get a chance to view that earlier, I viewed those videos where I could hear the sound, and they were those, those, especially the kids who were doing the at-home, the remote. They were having a ball. So it was really cool to see that. I just wondered how that would work. But thank you for that.
Yeah, we wanted to give you just kind of a look at what it might look like, what, you know, different than, than it, than you're used to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. Kathy, I noticed in some of your concerns was classless with other schools. Is it true that you have some, a virtual teacher that has maybe students in another school? Is that happening?
Yes, that happens. Almost every, almost every remote teacher has teachers, has students from more than one school. In fact, I think there are some that have students from every school. Not in, not at Cicero L., but some of them have teachers from all six elementaries.
So it's happening in other elementaries, too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see.
Kathy, this.
Oh, go ahead, Mary. Yes.
Yes, so I, I just want to say thank you for your presentation and also for Dawn's presentation, too, and her team. We appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you for sharing all the challenges and the struggles that you're facing. We, we realize that, you know, this method of teaching is new and a work in progress, and everyone is getting creative and digging deep and trying to do the best that they can for our, our learners. And we appreciate all that you're doing, and just keep it up, keep doing what you're doing. And, you know, we're going to get through this, and hopefully that there's an end in sight, and we can get back to, back to normal or a new normal of, you know, where we can have everyone in the buildings again. And, you know, I think we're going to have just some, some things that come out of this where our, our students, you know, we find that they're going to need extra help, you know, when they come back to full days in the classroom. And, you know, we're going to have new challenges. So, you know, just keep positive and keep doing what you're doing, and we'll get through it. And we appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Mary, because I'm telling you, our staff has gone, they're, they're so creative. As many challenges as they've, they've named, they have come up with ways to address all of those challenges. And sometimes they feel like they're beating their heads against the wall. But when you see what they're actually doing and actually accomplishing, it's pretty remarkable. So thank you for that appreciation.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I don't see anyone waving, so I will say thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, and we'll move on to our next presentation, which is going to be Mr. London in professional development. Thank you. All yours, sir.
Thank you as well for the chance to come share what's going on with professional development. I know this is really because after all those years of building presentations, Bob is just worried that he wouldn't see me this year for a board presentation. So he, he wants to get me back because he was worried he wouldn't see me presenting for ALN. So, no, seriously, thank you for the chance to give you a sense of where we're at with professional development growth. My hope is that from this slideshow, there's, there's four main takeaways that you have at the end of it. The first is that a great deal has already taken place and continues to be in place around professional development, and I'll share some of that with you. The second, that PD looks really different under these conditions because the greatest challenge that we're faced with, to be very honest with you, is access to the learner, access to the adult learner. There's so many demands upon their time right now. The professional development is looking a lot different. I've had staff, as I've gone out to buildings, say, you know, Dave, we need a lot more. You got to get us some different stuff. And I've had staff say to me, Dave, if you tell me anything more about professional development, I'm going to come through the computer and, you know, and knock you out. So we're, we're PDing ourselves every night when we go home and try and figure out how to do this. So there's this, this wide continuum of where folks are at with professional development. Third takeaway is I hope you, you see that our model right now is very differentiated, and it's focused on building capacity in the learner, not just presenting content. And finally, the last thing that the goal moving forward is that, given this convergence of instructional expectations, APPR requirements, and the PD needs survey that we recently put out there, the goal is to be responsive and flexible and to evolve with professional development because these conditions require a different approach. So that being said, I'll start off by sharing with you what, what kind of what's happened, an overview of what's happened to date. As we look at what's happened since the summer, you know, not even going back to last spring, where a lot of folks kind of just scrambled to gather up whatever resources they could. A great deal of our staff took, took part in BOSI's blended learning sessions. These were a combination of how to teach in remote settings, how to teach in hybrid settings. And then the other BOSI's tech-related sessions include things that were very similar to what we offered for Google. If our staff were closed out of our own Google sessions, there was some Google skill sessions that BOSI's offered they were able to take part in. So that was 143 people for the blended learning sessions this summer, 107 for other BOSI's tech. The big one, though, was this, this DIGU, this acronym that our tech coaches completely built on their own, which stands for Digital Integration and Design University. And they used that, that model to kind of say, kind of a catchy phrase, to group the trainings around best practices in a remote or hybrid learning environment. According to research, that engaging the student is one of the primary pieces. So DIGU Engage, digital citizenship, primary area to consider with remote learning, assessment, design. And then the sixth one there was this, this piece about Bitmoji Interactives. But we had 642 staff members that took place in those sessions combined. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean, to be very honest with you, 642 different staff members. That could be one person who took three of them, or one person who took two, one person who took all six. But there was a total of 642 attendees with these six sessions that our own tech coaches designed. And those really, they were entirely built by our three technology coaches. What that resulted in, to be very honest, was a consistency in the message. So our staff heard the same things. It was a practicing of the skills. They're designed for these sessions. It was two hours long. And a staff member would come and hear the content the first hour, could choose to stay for the second hour and go to a breakout room that was either beginner, intermediate, or advanced, and actually practice the skill and turn in a product at the end. So they could either go for the one hour and get paid for that, or they could go for the full two hours, turn in that product at the end and get paid for two hours of it. So it's really differentiated to where you were at around these, these elements. And it was both this, this sense of the skill set for technology and the instructional planning and design. That's really been another issue we've had to tease out when a staff member says, I'm not sure how to do this. We've had to really take some time to figure out what is it that you're not sure how to do? Is it around the skills to operate technology? Or is it around designing the instruction and making the use of it congruent to your learning objectives? So that's been a challenge. In addition to DIGU, we had some follow-up. Those sessions occurred again after school opened, and they were all archived on the IT, the technology webpage. So if you were closed out of a session over the summer, if you wanted to see it again, you could go back to their webpage, and you could watch that video as many times as you wanted to. We also purchased 230 eBooks for the Distance Learning Playbook. We opened that up to all staff, whoever wanted a copy of that for the eBook. And our consultant teachers held voluntary drop-in sessions once a week. So if you wanted to come and just have an open forum chat with our consultant teachers about a certain chapter or topic in that digital learning playbook, we could do that. Unfortunately, you know, those weren't attended very well. After a few of those sessions, we only have a few participants, you know, we discontinued those. Our assumption is, at the time of day, after a full day of either teaching remotely or hybrid, it was just very, very hard. And that's one of the things that's been very difficult for professional development is that access to the learner's time and energy under these conditions. And finally, you know, if you're interested, you can visit both the technology webpage and the PD development, you know, that webpage. So kind of moving quickly through this, obviously, I'll take some questions at the end. So what's currently happening with professional development? I want to talk about these three key pieces, the format we've offered it in, the archives that are available, and then some quick hits. We've really taken this differentiated approach. So this graphic is an example of one of our technology coaches' schedule across the week. The purpose in showing you this isn't to just say, wow, look how busy they are. It's really around that color coding. We'd like you to take a minute, and I'll just, I'll pause for a second to let you see the variety of ways in which they are working with our learners. So it's not simply how much they're doing, it's the different ways that PD is happening. PD is no longer a sit-and-get-one-session offering after school. It's no longer coming over to the district office cafeteria and hearing a presenter for a few hours. There's a great deal of coaching that's happening here now. And some of that is one-to-one, some of that is stopping into a grade-level meeting. And they are very accessible if teachers reach out and say, hey, I'd like to book you to come on this day to, during my planning period to help me work on this or learn how to do that. So there's a variety of ways, as well as a variety of responsibilities. You can see embedded within that schedule, some of it is the communication with the tech department. Some of it is building the videos, taking time to build the videos that we then put out there for staff to watch on their own time. Some of it's just responding to all the requests they have and redirecting that to the right place. They are really doing incredible, I mean, Yeoman's work really isn't captured, the amount of effort they're putting into, not just the content, but the process. In addition to that, if you go to their webpage, this is an example of how, I said, they've archived all those DIGU sessions from this summer. Somebody can go in and watch those slideshows. It doesn't include that coaching piece as much as the summer sessions did, but they certainly can watch those on their own if they're self-directed as a learner. In addition to DIGU, what's also archived on their webpage are so many other tech skills, PD offerings, as much as they want. Everything from operating the ViewSonic board to seesaw, video Zoom conferencing. You can see there's a number of different ways that the learner can go see what they need on their own time in the way they need it. And finally, one of the other things that's currently happening through our technology coaches are these quick hits. Each week, they put out an email that basically says, hey, we discovered another little tip or trick as to what might make your life easier teaching in this environment. We started in the Weekly Star the past couple of weeks, putting in a little thumbnail that includes a link to the tips and tricks, to the CT webpage, to the PD webpage, and to the SEL central page, so that we can start developing those navigation patterns for staff if they're not sure where to go. So there's a variety of ways. If you just need something quick, a new idea, you can get through tips and tricks. If you, on your own time, on a weekend, want to go and re-watch a video, you can. And so there's a number of different things being offered. The other piece that's happening currently is we've pulled back together the Community of Learning Professionals, which is formerly the Professional Development Committee. We have a great turnout for that. We have close to 30 folks that have stepped up to say they want to be a part of that committee this year, and it represents every building. It represents building-level administration, district-level administration, our consultant teachers, our tech coaches. It is a real wide cross-section of folks that have said, we want to be here to help support our colleagues in their professional learning and growth. So we've met twice, and one of the things we're going to focus on is revamping the professional development webpage. You know, if you've visited our webpage, especially the staff site, there's a great blog article out by Jen Gonzalez that talks about whether you're a curator or a dumper of resources on webpages. And we're going to try and curate our resources much better under these conditions so that it's intuitive, it's well-organized, and the next graphic will kind of show you where we're going. These categories, the first eight of them, are really what research says are the most important things to focus on in distance or remote or hybrid learning. And you'll notice that each one is titled with like an actionable word, like ensuring, establishing, embedding, promoting, as well as the area of focus. So it's what you want to do with technology, it's what you want to do with feedback, it's what you want to do with relationships. The ninth one is the content piece, because we know that some folks still want to say, I need to get to maths, things specific to the math program. So it's taking what research says is the instructional planning and design elements that are important to distance and remote and online learning, and the content piece, and neatly putting them into what I've labeled as these nine neighborhoods. Each one of these four will then be broken down into the same four consistent categories of multiple ways that a learner can access the resources. So I may want to look at articles, because I just want to go and read what research says about this or watch a video. I may want to look into what's offered for me to go be a part of, maybe through BOSI's, through our own district, through completely different organizations like Learner's Edge. And some of them might be free, some of them might be paid. The big lift for building this webpage and revamping it right now is vetting all the resources that are out there. I can tell you right now, I get 20 to 30 emails a day from different PD organizations that say, you know, try this, come to mine. And, and just to vet those to see if they are cost-related, or if they're quality, or if they're relevant to what we're doing, it, you know, is a great lift in time. So CLP is going to help us with that. The third piece to this, and this is something new we're trying to get into, and we're struggling with how to get it off the ground, but we really want to do this, collecting what our own colleagues in the district are doing and housing that someplace. So if I'm a second-grade teacher at Cicero L., I can go look for a engaging student's idea that maybe the junior high teacher discovered, but I can modify it to my level. How do we collect all those and kind of put them into a repository so we can cross-pollinate the ideas that our own staff are discovering as they PD themselves? And the fourth one is having applications for these things to APPR. So when you discover this strategy, how is that going to support you in providing evidence in your observation process? So you can combine two things, that these good ideas also provide good evidence for your observation and evaluation. I'm sorry, I have no idea. I'm at a time because I get talking about this and I lose my pacing, so I'll shift on. Where are we going next? So the next piece is that about a week or so ago, we put out a professional development survey. What I love is that little number of responses at the top. It's not even there anymore. It's up to 384 at the moment, which is nearly, that's a great response rate. You know, they say if you can get 10 to 15% response rate to a survey, you're doing well. There's over, there's approximately 300 to 325 teachers that responded to this side of that number, which is bordering on 50% of our instructional staff, which is a great response rate to find out what they need. And, and I believe it's a very representative sample of what they need. And it was six very simple questions, some identifiers, and then we broke it out into what they need for technology, what they need for instructional planning and design, the way they'd like that, as far as the how, the when. And so we've got some really, really interesting results that we're just starting to get out. I can share with you some district-wide trends. I'll give you a second to review this data that was in the slideshow. I'll, I'll be a little bit of a spoiler alert here, and I'll share with you some of the trends that I've already seen by spending about a week or so organizing all this. I've taken this survey data and created pie chart slides for each building, for all the questions, as well as the whole district. So at the building level, they can disaggregate for themselves anything they want from this. Some early trends that are not surprising, synchronous versus asynchronous interest is actually reversed between elementary and secondary. So that question about what you, what you're more interested in, elementary has a stronger interest in effective asynchronous strategies, but they're doing better with the synchronous piece. Secondary, secondary is more concerned about effective strategies for the synchronous piece, and they seem to be feeling better about the asynchronous component of their instruction. I love that because it continues to point us in this direction of saying it's not a one-size-fits-all model. We need to differentiate not just between the individual learner, but a building's need or focus, as well as elementary versus secondary. The learner, the student changes as you go up, and so the need changes. Advanced versus introductory-level tools are of higher interest. So you see the Google Classroom Advanced, 194 want that. There was much less interest, significantly less interest, like maybe one-fifth of the folks wanting Google Beginner or Zoom versus Google Meet. So what that shows me is, and this is somewhat of an inference, but the conclusion I take from that is, our, our basic skill set in getting asynchronous learning off the ground is there. The capacity is there to get things launched and started. So when we think about those instructional expectations of giving students access. So when we think about those instructional expectations of giving students access, there's a lot of folks that are ready to give the access, it's more about wanting to figure out better ways to use that from the instructional design standpoint. No surprise that small like groups and Wednesdays are the strongest responses for how and when. That folks really want to do it in a small group of people that are doing something similar to them, whether it's a grade level team or a PLC or a department. And Wednesdays are the time, and there's a significant pattern there. And all buildings found that the category of supporting parents during this model was clear across the board. And that's why my recommendations I've shared with you, I think that that's a district level thing we're going to need to focus on. So that each building can figure out how to better support parents in this, that's not necessarily just an individual teacher's lift. Also, each building has some very unique anomalies in this data. For instance, one building has a nearly equal distribution between those three formats of after-school, Wednesdays, and on my own, which is a little bit of a deviation, they're almost one-third of their respondents for each one of those models versus this heavy weight towards Wednesday. One building has a much higher response rate for the category of providing quality feedback for learners. It was very low in all the other buildings, but one building had a higher interest in that. And one building accounts for more than 50% of the office personnel staff who responded to their survey. So I say that not because any of those things are earth-shattering, but because there's a value in a building disaggregating their data and saying, hey, for us, we have this one focus that should rise to the top that we want to address this topic in this way or this skill set. So, and that's really what I just spoke to in this slide. Today I put out an email that went to all the building administrators, the CLP building reps, the district technology committee reps, the tech coaches, consultant teachers, to say, here are some trends, here's your access to your data. I strongly suggest that you get a small group of leadership at your building together to review your data and say, where do we want to go next? In the meantime, I also recommend that our coaches are going to start to work on some of these real broad, more priority areas. So our tech coaches are going to look at that Google advanced because it's, you know, a high request rate for that. Our consultant teachers are going to look at those instructional areas of student engagement, synchronous effective learning, asynchronous effective learning strategies. And we'll start to build some targeted PD either through that revamped website so that the learner can go there and choose the way they want, the topic they want, the resource they want, as well as make it a PD offering that can work in all those different settings. That's going to be the trickier part, so that, you know, it can be offered on a Wednesday if a second grade team wants to meet together and talk about an article, or it can be offered through a video after school, if somebody says, I want to do it on my own at home. And then we're going to have this support through the APPR process. All of our observers, the principals, directors, consultant teachers, their recalibration process right now is focused on, what does it look like in an asynchronous environment to collect evidence? What does it look like in an online learning environment to collect evidence based on our APPR proposal to the state being accepted? So that is a real quick, rapid-fire walkthrough PD that I'll open up now to any questions. It's, it certainly is a bit of a challenge and is evolving, but I hope that's valuable for you.
Questions out there? Dave, I just had one quick, I think it's been answered just from what I heard here and what I read earlier. But, I mean, if you have somebody who's not getting it from the DIUs or didos, whatever you call those, and, or emails or whatever, I mean, they, they can get access to one of the coaches. I mean, they can schedule that if they need something in person, I'm seeing that.
Absolutely. Now, I keep in mind that that's true, Paul, for our technology coaches. We no longer have professional developers in our district. I mean, our consultant teachers, they, they act and they look like professional developers in the type of instructional plan and design work they do, but they only serve our non-tenured folks as consultant teachers. Our tenured staff don't have that professional developer that offers a session like we've had historically. We've, and I, and I've shared this with Chris and Daniel, this, this idea that we have built a culture of self-directed learning over the past number of years, where we say to folks, if it's a half-day, submit your own proposal to, you know, design your own learning, you know what you need best. So that culture has been very self-directed, and now we're trying to pivot, you know, and go 180 degrees on a dime to say, now needs to be much more explicit and directive because of it being a whole new skill set, either technologically or instructionally in this model. So that's a challenge, we're trying to adapt to it. Our CTs, you know, we went from the nine to four, so that's, they're trying to kind of scramble and offer their services where they can. I think the biggest thing is to try and just make sure anything we create or we know is happening is accessible for staff district-wide. But yes, they can reach out to the tech coaches and say, can I schedule a one-on-one meeting with you? Can you come to our Wednesday PLC meeting? They're very, very busy, but there still is availability for them. I think it's about our learners knowing what's available to them right now. Everything I showed you there is all on one of our webpages within the staff site for them to access if they weren't there to be a part of it live.
Okay, thank you. Questions out there?
Bob, you've got, Bob, you've got to have something for me.
No, you did such a job, he doesn't have any.
Are we that far behind on time that he's just, he's going to bail on it?
No, I just, you know, Dave, you, you started this job, I mean, it's less than a year, and it's amazing what you've done and working with everybody and all that. So this, I mean, we didn't know we were going to have COVID, and I mean, this is a big change, very big change in professional development. You've done a great job, thank you.
Bob, I appreciate that because it has been a challenge is to say, what does PD look like under these conditions? And to try and honor that people need more, but, but also don't have time for. Like I said, the biggest challenge is access to the learner because Wednesdays are full, they're burnt out by the end of the day, we can't pull them out of the classroom. So how do we actually do PD? And, and so I'm just trying to offer as much variety as we can under these conditions. Because PD is no longer a verb where you sit there for two hours and I wave a wand and say, you've been PD'd. It's a really organic, evolving process for them. And there, the teachers deserve the credit because they've risen to the challenge of saying, I'm going to go out and learn what I need to know to pull this off. I think what I hope for the most out of everything I just presented to you is that collection of colleague ideas comes to fruition. If we, the collective potential that they have, the collective ideas that they've already put in place, if we can somehow gather those and call those and put them in one place so that they can benefit from each other's ability, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Board of Education Committee reports. And I will go to Ms. Gallin with policy if there's any updates or comments.
So we were scheduled to meet this month, and we didn't have any policies to review for December. We had a couple that we had tabled from November, but they weren't ready yet, so we ended up canceling our December meeting. So our next meeting's in January.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Crabtree, there you are.
Yeah, I'm here. So the Legislative Committee met on December 16th. It's amazing, this committee, just like Mary, you got students, you got teachers, you got parents and administrators. It's, we have great committees in this district. But we were joined fortunately at our 16th meeting. Al Sterpi joined us and Pam Hunter, both are Assembly members. We were joined by our Senator Rachel May and John Mannion, who was sworn in earlier the day, was in his car. He wasn't driving, his wife was driving, and he joined us. So we had all four of our legislators to come and hear our story at North Syracuse. So again, I want to thank Dan for talking about technology and our social ideas that we want, and for Don to talk a little bit about the funding that we haven't been, so far the 20% has not hurt us. And we talked about the impact of COVID, and Dan talked a little bit about that, and that our budget process is just beginning, it's in buildings and so forth. I'm very impressed with Giorgio Rada and Owen Greco. Our two students spoke eloquently to our legislators and told them how important our school is to them. Talked a little bit about hybrid education and also the kind of courses that they are enjoying in high school. So I thought that was great. And our legislators talked, each one of them spoke. I always listen to Pam very well, we're not in a good position, okay? I know, and I know Dan and Don know, it's going to be a difficult year, 2021, 22, and they're letting us know that right up front. Meanwhile, though, I don't know if they voted yet, I haven't watched TV today, but we have a package, a stimulus package. And of course, I took some notes on it. There is money for education. Now, there's no money for states and localities, but Mr. Schumer came on and said that our state will receive 50 million. And we're talking about relief to COVID, and that 5.8 billion of this relief funds will go to schools and universities. I'm thinking, Paul, that it's probably going to go for the things that we purchased, the COVID, you know, to, to help us through. Not so much, I don't think it's going to deal with our state aid problems and so forth, but it's still something that we got to look, and Don will tell us the next five, six months what it is. But also, I just want to say real quickly that Mr. Biden is probably within the next four or five days going to select a new Secretary of Education. And the reason I asked Don the question today was because he is really going to emphasize Title I federal funding to school districts, billions of dollars. Also, Dan would like to hear this, but funding for schools, for social workers and guidance counselors and those kind of staff members. I haven't heard that in 20 years. He even is different than Obama in that, he's, Obama and Bush, one thing is, teachers will be glad to hear this, there will be less testing of students. Bush started that, Obama carried that on, that a lot of funding dealt with your testing, he's not into that. So I was glad to hear that, and also special education funding. I think he is going to be an education president because he's married to an educator, and should be sitting with him every night, talking about it. But I can't say enough, Paul, what the election in two weeks from tomorrow in Georgia is going to do. I mean, I'm not a politician, but if a certain party wins those two senators, he will have difficulty getting some of this through. If it goes a different way, we might be seeing some great changes in education. So that's my long report. We're going to meet on inauguration day, January 20th, but I really thank our representatives to come. Did you want to say anything at all, Paul, add anything at all? Because you were at the meeting and you had some questions and statements, is there anything you would like to add?
No, no, nothing really, because you crystallized my thoughts so eloquently. But I would just say, you know, having said all that, my wet, big wet blanket to throw over it all is the state's $15 billion in the hole as we sit here right now. So, you know, my hope, and I understand those pieces you talked about, my hope is that the, you know, assistance for states and localities is revisited after January 20th. There's talk that that'll happen, I just think that's crucial, because we got zero for state localities.
Right, so when I, I guess what I'm saying is the monies are coming to help us with COVID and, and, and it's not going to help us with our 21, 22 budget, yep.
You know, they did talk about creative revenues, you know, there may be some support for that in the state, but, but there is such a hole to fill that is, that is very scary, so that remains to be seen. So thank you, Bob.
You're welcome, thank you.
While you're there, BOSI's, always OCM BOSI's.
I can say, Connie sent you the report of our different parts of BOSI's, are there any questions? Hearing that, just one thing I wanted to tell you is our Central New York Rick, which is very important to North Syracuse, and also not only to OCM BOSI's, but a lot of other BOSI's. We will be approving a young lady from Fabius Poppy, Chantel Corbin, to take over this technology part. Her background is amazing, she's done everything at Fabius Poppy, Athletic Director, Assistant High School Principal, Principal at the Elementary, but mainly 14 years as the Technology Coordinator. And I heard she did very well in the interview, so we'll be approving her in January, which is great. So Pam will be leaving, and then we'll have a new person come in that'll work with North Syracuse. The other thing, Don and Dan would know is I believe that Matt, our superintendent, and his team met with your team to go over the programs that North Syracuse has with BOSI's and what changes you want to be. And I will have that ready for our board, the printout, you know how I give it every year of the programs that we have. I'll have that for you next meeting. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, and Superintendent Bowles' comments?
Okay, the first comment is the North Syracuse Education Foundation had a free desk project that they had been working on. They ended up building 53 desks for students in need. I think you've seen this on TV and other districts and things that have been done for students who just don't have that dedicated space in their home. So now, since we're doing a lot more remote, there are 53 students that are benefiting from this project, and I just wanted to say thank you. Other things, as you know, as of this past Thursday, we went fully remote along with Wes Jenny at that time. As you've seen on the news quickly, other districts were having the same issues. Liverpool went fully remote as of last Friday, Beville, JD FM, as of this, as of today. Many schools in different counties have done the same, we're all facing some of the same dilemmas. And hopefully, things will, will get a little bit better as we enter into the new year. I did want to just make a shout out because with Paige's Butterfly, which it was a fundraiser that we did the year before, but we kind of went in as a group, Liverpool, CNS, and FM combined raised $22,000 between the schools, which was absolutely outstanding. And the last comment I want to make is just again, we have information about Wellness Wednesdays and parent resources. And I just recommend that people go to the, the, the website and take a look at the resources that are there. We have resources for students, for staff, for parents, and there's a lot of good information that is very, very helpful. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education comments? I just have one thing to share, I was, I don't, I believe I'm the only one to receive this, but I have, I pass this around, but I guess I can't. But we have a Christmas card that was sent to me and it was for me and the Board of Education from the NSCA. Looks like it's reading backwards on my screen, so just wanted to let you know that we received that. Okay, any other comments? Having none, seeing none, we're going to move on to our routine action items, and I'm going to look for a motion of somebody for consideration of approval, the minutes of the December 7th meeting of the board. Motion from Terry, seconded by Mary, any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. We have a consideration for classification of disabled students in B, C, and D. We have the District Special Ed Committee for Disabled Students in school. We have the preschool disabled students and the home instruction students. So if I get a motion to take B, C, and D together, please. Motion for Mr. Thorne, seconded from Ms. Krueger, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried, and acknowledgement of business office reports. Motion, please, to accept those, motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Mr. Herman, any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, and that is carried. If we have a recommendation and discussion action? If we have a recommendation and discussion action items for A, for the amendment of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school calendar. Motion to put that before us, please. Motion for Ms. Kruger, seconded from Ms. Scanlon. And that was referenced in the Friday letter. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Here we have some Texas URE settlements here, and they were referenced in the Friday letter. If I get a motion for B to put that before us. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Harrington. Again, these are discussed in the Friday letter. So if you have any questions for B now is the time. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. So I will turn it over to Ms. Gibson.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Yes.
Robert Crabtree.
Yes.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Yes.
Terry Kruger.
Yes.
Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
And Mark Thorne.
Yes.
Hey, that is carried unanimously. If I get a motion, please, C in front of us. That's the resolution for the settlement with Home Depot. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Harrington. And again, a roll call vote.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Yes.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Hey, that is carried unanimously. And we have someone to give me a motion for D, that is the Texas URE settlement with Walmart. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. Go ahead.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Robert Crabtree.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Matthew Herman.
Yes.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
Mark Thorne.
Aye.
Okay, that is carried. And if I could get a motion for the surplus of non-marketing, non-marketing goods surplus, excuse me. Motion from Ms. Kruger, seconded from Ms. Scanlon. Any questions there? I figured out it was some kind of oven anyway. I had to look it up on the internet. I just had to look it up because of the name of it.
Very old, old piece of work.
Yeah, it's an old, old sham, yeah.
Yeah. All in favor? Pose, that is carried. And item F, please. A motion for F to put before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. Amendment to the July sixth organizational meeting. That's just the, getting the correct name for the petty cash funds, the new principal. All in favor? Pose and that is carried. And G, motion, put that before us, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, seconded from Mr. Harrington. That is the resolution to approve the teacher lead evaluators. You heard that reference today in the professional development presentation. All those in favor? Pose, that is carried. I just want to acknowledge a retirement, and that would be with Andrew here, Andrew Harrington. Had custodian to twenty-one-point-nine years of service. So thank you, Mr. Harrington. And under Personnel Reports, Personnel Report A, if I get a motion to put that before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion on Personnel A? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that is carried. Support Staff Personnel B, motion, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Oppose, that is carried. And Administrative Personnel C, a motion, please. Mr. Crabtree, second, Mr. Marizio. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment that the person that we are hiring for House One, Heather, will do a phenomenal job. In the short time that she's been in the new position that she was in since the beginning of the year. All you have to do is read what she's done is amazing. And I wish her well. And to say the committee picked somebody or chose somebody very well. And most of all, she's a graduate of my high school, Anadog Central, so that's helped out for me.
Hey, thank you. Okay, at this time, then.
We got a vote. We got a vote. We didn't vote, right?
Okay, I will take that as, as a point, I'll take that as a point of order. And we will vote now.
A second. So all I need is the eyes and the nays.
Right, right.
All in favor? Looks like they're all eyes. Any oppositions? That's carried. Okay. I would like to, then I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of three individual employees with no action to follow. If I could get a second, please. Second from Mr. Marizio. All in favor? Opposed. Okay, we're moving into executive session. I would just like a motion, please, for adjournment of the meeting. Motion for Mr. Thorne, seconded from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Nope, all in favor? Pose, we are adjourned and we will meet at the other.